Welcome, everyone. I will call to order the Tuesday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. At five thirty-one P M. Roll call. All counselors are present. Counselor Melendez, Counselor Heed, and Counselors of Perry. Calendars and Communications, I have none. Counselors of Perry, do you have any? While he figures out his audio, Counselor Heed, do you have any Calendar and Communications?
I do not have any calendars or communications.
Thank you. Counselors of Perry, if you are speaking, we cannot hear you. Okay. Um, can you, can you just try and speak, see if I can hear you, Counselors appearing?
Hello?
Okay, thank you. We hear you now. All right, on to the approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the July meeting? Meeting minutes?
So moved.
Right. I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, that carries unanimously three zero zero. Onto the appro- uh, onto new business?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm at a meeting. All right.
All right, on to new business. So first, two applicants we would take are for inland and wetlands agency. So, um, we have a note here. There is one member vacancy, and there's a, an alternate vacancy. So we have two applicants. We will, um, speak with both of them, and then after we can make a decision on who will be the full member and who will be the, um, the alternate.
A point of order, uh, Counselor Chairman Lindas?
Yes.
Uh, only Gary Robbins is present. I don't see, um, what it is. Courtney McCracken here, just point of order, I guess. Not really a point of order, just an FYI.
Okay, I, I do believe they are here. Let me see.
Courtney McCracken's on my, my, uh, video. It's online too.
Got it. Sorry, I do now.
Okay, very good, very good. Um, okay, so we will begin with Courtney McCracken. So, welcome. Does any counselors have any questions?
Mister Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Counselors appearing?
Mister McCracken, uh, how do you see the, uh, the inland wetlands commission?
Well, I, I don't know a lot about it. I, um, I built a house in Mystic for, uh, on, in, on Fishtown Road, uh, in Groton, uh, four years ago. And, um, so my involvement then was I, I had to get a permit from that, that committee, um, to take down some trees. We're putting in the net zero energy house, and we needed, uh, access for sunlight for solar panels. So, um, I did deal with the committee at that time. Um, the architect and I did a presentation on the house, so I, I know a little bit about what they do. I've, I've, I've read some of the, some of the documents online about what the committee does, but, um, um, so I have a, 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 you know, limited idea of exactly what they do. I'm, I'm told by Barbara, who, um, I can't remember her last name, uh, she's the one who I think has, um, uh, left the committee recently, um, that, um, somebody, um, with the, with the town will kind of get me up to speed on some of the details and procedures. Um, you know, I'm interested in helping out and, um, and, you know, make, helping however I can, and I think it's a subject that I'm interested in, uh, with, uh, wetlands, you know, how, what we do to protect them and, um, uh, what should the town do? What's the right thing to do for, uh, when, when people want to do something that might affect wetlands?
How, how do you feel you will contribute to the commission?
Well, I do have a background in construction. Um, I have a background in engineering, civil engineering. And, um, so I, you know, I'm hoping that, 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 that those two things will, um, give me some expertise that'll help them, help people, um, figure out the, the right way, thing to do with permit applications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Heed, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, first of all, thank you, and actually thank all of you for, for coming out. Um, I just want to make sure that, um, one of the, the ways that you contribute, uh, to these committees, they, they often have a difficult time, uh, getting a quorum. So just attending is, is usually pretty helpful. Um, so you haven't been on inland wetlands, uh, yet, uh, but, um, you seem to have some experience with what, what it might take, I think, to, to be a member. Uh, so that's, that's always good to see, and I, I'm very appreciative that you want to volunteer your time for this. Uh, so are there any things, i- is there anything that you'd like to bring to the committee that's new, or, or like, what would be one of your motivations for, for joining?
Uh, no, I mean, I've only lived in, in Groton for four years, and, um, I just retired in December. Um, kind of moved around a lot, and I've never really had the opportunity to, um, get involved in any kind of local government function. Um, so I'm interested in, um, in doing that now that I have the time. And, um, so that I, you know, I just want to be of service. And, um, and again, I think my expertise and my background will help, I hope, help with the decision-making process. So, um, you know, this is going to be our home now, uh, where my wife and I are both retired, and we're interested in learning more about Groton, meeting more people, because we just, we moved from, uh, Rhode Island four years ago.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
I'm happy to meet you, sir.
Very good. Um, if there are no more questions, we can move on to speaking with Gary Robbins before any motions are made. So, welcome, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today.
Absolutely. Thank you for, um, offering to volunteer. Um, and once again, I'll open up the floor for questions, Counselors appearing.
Same question to you, sir. How do you, how do you see the, uh, inland wetland agency?
Well, so I'll say that in context of my background. I'm a professor of hydrogeology at the University of Connecticut. I'm new to Groton, although not new to the state of Connecticut. I've lived here for the last thirty-six years. I've worked with a lot of towns on different kinds of water-related issues around the state, including, uh, uh, we'll, um, uh, wetland commissions and all, and, uh, um, I've also been a regulator. I've been a federal regulator, so I'm sort of used to reading, eating regulations. I understand you guys do have a inland water, let's say it's water, waterway, watercourses and, and, uh, inland wetlands regulation. So, although I'm not all that familiar with every, all the, all the nuances, but, but, uh, given my experience in the past, I'd assume it's not that, all not that different. Uh, and all, and, uh, I'm also a licensed geologist. I'm a licensed engineering geologist, uh, and all, and, uh, uh, so I think I, you know, I'm, as I said, I'm new here and, uh, uh, but I do a lot of volunteerism and, uh, volunteering, I should say, and, uh, I'm a volunteer at the Seaport, okay, and, uh, working on the Amistad, uh, I hear, I'm not retired though, and, uh, I still, still teach at UConn, you know? And, and I think, uh, given my expertise, I could, uh, be helpful, and that's really why I'm here. Is that sufficient? That's, that's my answer.
What, what do you think the agency does?
Well, I, well, they, they enforce the, the, your regulations and, uh, um, and, uh, in, in the sense of protecting watercourses and, uh, um, and, um, uh, wetland areas, and, uh, that's basically what they do, and, uh, and all. I think that's, that's it. I mean, the, obviously, there's a, a need to preserve these things and, uh, and, uh, and yet, at the same time, you have to deal with, uh, you know, compromises of various kinds and all, in context of, uh, your regulation and in terms of, uh, be it, be it housing or businesses or whatever, and, uh, and so one tries to find sort of a happy medium, and yet, at the same time, offer, uh, uh, levels of protection to, to those, to those environments.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Counselor Heed, do you have any questions?
Uh, actually, a question for, for both of the gentlemen. Uh, let's see. My view doesn't show Mister McCracken again. Uh, oh, there he is. Okay, yeah, sorry, I've got it on speaker view, so I apologize for that. Um, I'm wondering if either one of you has a preference for being full member versus, uh, an alternate. Uh, in most cases, the way that these, uh, committees work, um, is everybody's involved in the conversation and everybody generally votes. Uh, the purpose of the alternate is just that if the permanent don't show up, they're able to maintain a quorum. Um, so just wondering if either one of you has a preference?
No.
No, I, I don't have.
I agree with Mister McCracken. I have no preference. Yeah, I'm just here to help, and, uh, that's it, you know?
Right, uh, great. And, um, have you watched the, the meetings before? Do you know what's generally going on?
I, I have not actually watched your town meetings, or the meetings of this, of this, of the agency, you know, um, here, although I have been involved in, uh, um, you know, wetlands issues in other, in other towns in the state.
All right, thank you.
And I think I mentioned I, I, uh, the, the extent of my, uh, attending a meeting was when I went in to get a permit. So I, I did, I did go through that process once myself.
Great, excellent, thanks. Uh, no more questions, uh, Mister Chairman?
Thank you. Okay, see no further questions? I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Courtney McCracken to the Inland and Wetlands Agency as a full member, so moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions, that carries unanimously three zero zero. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing Gary Robbins to the Inland Wetlands Agency as an alternate, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed abstentions, that carries unanimously three zero zero. Thank you, Mister McCracken and Mister Robbins. This is, uh, the first step in the process. Um, this will now go over to the full council at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which should be the first Tuesday in September. Um, and then after that, if you are, you, you don't, you won't have to show up for that meeting. Um, but, uh, after that, if you are moved through, which is generally a easy process, um, you will be receiving communications from the town clerk, um, uh, letting you know, uh, what, what, what to do then. You'll be, you'll be full, uh, members then. So thank you for, for volunteering and coming out to meet with us.
As, as I said, as long as I can help, okay?
I, I second the thank you. I'm, I'm delighted we have people like you who want to participate in this committee and, uh, um, I, I think you both inspire me. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess, I guess we leave, correct?
Yes, yes, you're, you're free to leave. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, moving on now to the Tax Abatement Study Committee. This will be a five-member body. You have four applicants, three of which are here tonight. Um, so we'll just speak with them all in turn. First, I have David Atwater. Welcome. Um, any, any questions, Counselor Zepary?
David, uh, what, could you tell us what your interest in this committee is? Can't hear you, you're muted. You're still muted. Move your cursor to the lower-left part of your screen.
There you go. Now, okay, the volume showed that I wasn't muted, but, sorry, Joe, I, I just didn't. Um, I, I guess the, the first reason is that Cindy Landry asked me if I would volunteer for this committee. I think with my financial background and my experience on the town council, I'm qualified to serve.
Um, you're, now Cindy Landry asked you, you hadn't, you had no interest before?
Well, I didn't ask you to participate. I didn't know anything about this committee until she asked me.
Um, did, do you have a particular view of this committee? Where do you think this should go?
Well, I, I think it's a study to find out whether there should be any kind of abatements offered to veterans, elderly, disabled, and so forth. Um, it, because it's a new committee and a new study, I don't, I don't have an opinion as to where it should go.
Are you in favor of, uh, tax abatements for elderly and disabled people?
I, I have no opinion yet, Joe. I, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but if it means a burden to other taxpayers or a burden to the town budget to provide services, then maybe you shouldn't have.
Uh, David, there's one other thing I was, I was, uh, curious about. You were a member of the town council until two years ago, and you resigned within a couple of months of, of the end of your term, and never gave a reason for that. Uh, is there a reason why you left that, uh, that?
Point of, point of order. Uh, I think we should keep it relevant to the committee discussion that we're talking about, please.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Conrad, but my concern is, um, are we going to, uh, appoint someone who will vacate the office precipitously again? That's the concern for this committee.
Okay, so, thank you. Um, Conrad, Counselor Heed, your point of order is well taken. Um, Counselors of Perry, uh, keep your questions relevant to, um, the Tax Abatement Study Committee. Uh, um, I guess you can ask the question, do you plan on serving through the full, to the completion of the study, uh, Mister Atwater?
I, I guess my, and I have a question about this, but in the motion that was passed back in May, it's sort of ambivalent as to how long this committee has. It says the committee will be formed and report back within sixty days. Is that sixty days from the time of the motion, or is that sixty days from the completion of the formation of the committee? If it's only sixty days, in that, in any case, I will, I will certainly finish my, my time on the committee.
Thank you. Counselors appear, you have the floor?
No, no further questions. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Heed, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, first of all, I'm, I want to thank you for not taking positions before you've had a chance to study, uh, the issue. Um, I guess, uh, my only question is, well, like, I, I don't, I don't know what the committee does either, because it's a new committee, right? So I don't know how you would go about doing it. Uh, do you have, uh, any thoughts on how to approach it, or what kinds of questions may be relevant?
Well, I, I guess, reading through the, the uh, meeting minutes for, what, four months, I think that it was discussed. There certainly seems to have been a gathering of a lot of information about what's, you know, I said legal, I guess, what you can do and what you can't do. Um, but I, I think it's, because I've always felt on the council, you, you keep an open mind and you do what's best for the community and not any particular group or segment or whatever. It's, I mean, you can't just favor the, the veterans. You can't just favor the disabled. You have to look at it as a benefit for the whole town.
All right, good, thank you so much.
Mister Chairman, may I, uh, comment?
Yes.
The, uh, the, the activity of the committee is defined by statute. And the committee's, uh, job is determined to determine the feasibility of going ahead with this sort of, uh, program. It is to work with the, the tax assessor and determine how much of, uh, an impact uh, a tax abatement would have on the rest of the town and on the town's income. And that's the role of the, the committee, and, and if you look at, oh, I could get the statute. I know the last, uh, last part of it is one twenty-nine N, but I don't remember the first, uh, section indication. But it's defined by statute. It's a statutory requirement that we have such a committee, and that in the statute, statute also requires a, uh, a report within sixty days. Uh, and, and that's what we're doing for the committee. Uh, the, the committee is not to determine whether or not there should be a, an abatement. It's to determine the feasibility and the impact it will have. And that's the report we're looking for from this committee.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, do I see any more questions for Mister Atwater?
No further questions for me.
Okay.
Further questions?
All right. Um, thank you, Mister Atwater. Um, we will vote at the end uh, on, on, on all candidates, so we'll move on to, uh, John Piacenza. Um, he is also applying for the Tax Abatement Study Committee. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Counselors of Perry, do you have any questions?
Uh, how do you see your role in this committee, Mister Piacenza?
Well, uh, um, to answer your question, first, give a little bit of background. I've been on the Board of Assessment Appeals in the town for the last, uh, four years. As an alternate member. I, I should also mention that I worked for the town in the Finance Department for twenty-one-plus years. And, um, I too was asked to consider being on this committee, but by the assessor. But I obviously work closely with her as part of the, uh, Board of Assessment Appeals. And I have an interest in this because I, I'm retired now from the town, so I look at this as an opportunity to, to see if there's, uh, you know, relief that we could provide to elderly people, people on fixed income, veterans, people on just, students, disabled individuals, et cetera. And I have looked, I've read through all the statutes, and I've actually got some additional information um, from the assessor, because I work with her anyway, so I have a, um, working relationship with her, so to speak, even where we're not meeting for the B A A, but, um, so we have a program in place, uh, and the state stipulates what the income levels are and the min's and the maxes, and what your, uh, ceiling income is. So, I'm familiar with it. Um, I'm interested in it. Wondering if that, we could do more, you know? Lacking, uh, demographic information on the town in terms of median age and things, and income and things of that nature. I can't say too much more, but having been on the, uh, like I said, the Board of Assessment Appeals for four years, I have an interest in this aspect of it.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Heed?
Uh, yeah, actually, on the Board of Assessment or Appeals, um, you know, I'm impressed by your application, your resume and all that, but I wanted to specifically ask about that. Um, on that, how often do you have, um, appeals from, uh, people that may be subject to, like, um, well, like elderly, um, retired, anything like that?
Frankly, Conrad, not very often, because it's pretty well stipulated in the state statutes. There's not a lot of leeway. Uh, people typically come to us with appeals on those aspects of their evaluation, their assessment, that are somewhat subjective. And, and there is a subjective aspect to it, even though you hire a company, but you do comparable sale comparisons, but, um, as far as that aspect of it, not really much experience. People just don't come before us, because either they qualify, they don't, frankly, in most cases. And, um, but there are a plethora of state statutes and in some, somewhat, I don't say duplicative, but they overlap a bit. So, so the assessor did a good job of putting some matrices together to look at the various statutes and what applies to what, and it's a helpful tool. Because frankly, it's, it's a lot to sort through. So, anyway, to answer your question, um, not really, not my four years on the board.
All right, good, thank you. All right, no further questions.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list, we have John Worsbicky. He was unable to make the meeting today. Um, but he is on the Water Pollution Control Authority. We have spoken to him in the past. Um, I'm comfortable with still voting on his application today. Uh, do the other counselors feel the same way?
I concur.
Great.
Okay, okay, very good. So finally, we will speak with Mister Paul Duarte. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Um, I'll open up the floor for questions. Counselors appearing?
Well, what do you bring to the committee?
Uh, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm a person that, uh, is data-driven, and, um, I work, I work well in those type of situations. This committee, you know, it's short for one. And, uh, I'm familiar with the town, where the data in the town is, and, um, I've worked thirty-one years in the planning department, so I crunched a lot through the same type of processes and so that's what I think I could bring to this. I mean, David, like, brings financial and John, he's very current on, you know, what's going on with the assessments and, uh, I'm very familiar with the town, the town's neighborhoods, the history of the town's neighborhoods. You know, how they were built, how they grew. So, I think that's all going to be important when we look at what's feasible or not. Um, we still have to base that on the data that we have, so that's what I think I can do.
How do you feel about, uh, abatements for, for certain people, elderly, uh, disabled, uh, veterans who are disabled? I, 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 in fact, in fact, I think there's very little distinction between types of disability, as long as they're disabled. Uh, but how do you feel about doing tax abatements for those people?
Um, you know, the idea of tax abatements is, I say laudable, but whether or not you can afford it, is it feasible? I don't know. That's what we're here to find out. We're not here to find out what my personal preferences are, Joe. Um, mine, I think the purpose is for us to get the data, put it into a package that we can give to the council, and you guys can digest that information.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Heed.
Uh, yes, I know, I actually know Paul quite well, so I have no questions for Paul. I, I know who he is and um, how he approaches things, so I'm, I'm all in favor.
Very good. Very good. So I'll make a motion to, uh, recommending a resolu- resolution appointing David Atwater, John Piacenza, John Worsbicky and Paul Duarte to the Tax Abatement Study Committee. So moved.
Second. No, I would appreciate deciding individually.
Okay, I'll remove my motion. Uh, Counselors of Perry, uh, Counselor He, will you, uh, rescind your second?
Uh, sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing David Atwater to the Tax Abatement Study Committee. So moved.
Second.
All right. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? That motion carries two, one, zero. Uh, Zepery opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Atwater. Uh, I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution appointing John Piacenza to the Tax Abatement Study Committee. So moved.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions that carries unanimously three zero zero. I'll make a motion recommending a resolution appointing John Worsbicky to the Tax Abatement Study Committee. So moved.
Second.
All right. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions that carries unanimously three zero zero. I'll make a motion recommending a resolution, uh, appointing Paul Duarte to the Tax Abatement Study Committee. So moved.
Second.
Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions that carries unanimously three zero zero. Thank you. Um, congratulations to all and thank you for all the applicants. Uh, again, I'll say what I said to, in the inland and wetlands agencies. This is just the first step. Uh, the second step will be at the first Tuesday meeting of the town council. After that, you should be getting communications from the town clerk, um, about when, when your meetings will be held and, and how to attend them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks. Bye-bye.
Okay. Um, on to review of agenda items. Does anybody have anything for that?
Uh, just I guess a footnote to keep in mind, there is going to be a primary on Tuesday, September fourteenth. And I want to check, is that our? Oh, no, never mind. That's going to be the cow meeting. So we next meet on September twenty-first.
Okay. Yeah. So no conflict.
No problem. All right. Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay. Any other business?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions that carries unanimously three zero zero and we are adjourned at six oh five. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.